Welcome, welcome all to your informal session. And we're going to start off with a city council briefing on progress. We need to update the calendar. And Mr. Mayor.
The FPC, the Mayor of Teller Adams is going to have an update to council as it relates to some more specificity as it relates to the possible location for this development should council ultimately authorize a rezoning and then ultimately approve the rezoning for this project. This probably be new information for the council members and probably some of the view in public as well. If council desired a 4:00 to 6:00 PM public comment, we can give a similar presentation for the public as well, just in case some of the people who want to comment may need this additional context. So just want to let you know that, Mayor. If you want us after this presentation.
Okay. I'm sorry, what? How many after a presentation will have a council discussion and come to an agreement?
Okay. Tyler, at this time, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. And I think that the managers just did a better intro for this item than I can do, so I'll dive right into it. And you'll see, maybe I spoke too soon. Let's try, try that again. Okay, Kathy, can you run, can you drive? Thank you. So just to, to remind you of where we left this. And I'm, and I'll mention that, that this started as a request for all of the available land that the city had in the, in the ITA. Three phases, the phases, the first phase was thought to be would require a rezoning from an agricultural use to an industrial use for an advanced manufacturing product, project covering 250 acres. Anticipated capital investment in this phase of $175 million and 400 new employees. Kathy? Just to, this is exactly the information that we presented last time as an overview of the ITA. So I won't, in the interest of time, I won't go through all of this again, but this is just to share with the, the public, the history of the ITA, the green line. And then, and then here is the original master plan. This is straight out of the ITA plan. And I do want to stop here for a moment and, and talk about some evolution in the, in the project since we were last in front of you. The, and, and this is, excuse me, this is, I don't want to say that we have, that we have been negotiating that, that's this project, that's not something that you all have told us to do yet, but, but as there has been a wealth of public comment regarding the project and also we've had the opportunity to engage with the public, the, the prospect, the proposed development partner has been able to evolve their land plan. And also they were able to sit down with us and we were able to really understand what their square footage, get a better understanding of what their square footage needs were. And, and the good news is we've been, we've been able to really compress their, their offering. And so I'm going to turn the mic this way so that I can step over and, and point to the map and, and make sure that the, that the IT or AV guys in the next room don't come running in here and tell me to get back to the mic again. So I'll try to, I'll try to work from here if I can.
They've been known to do that, right?
Yes, they will. And so I'm going to step over and orient, and just for the public that's, that if I'm away from the mic, I'm going to start at the north end of, of the map. And I'm going to first point to the condensed area. I'm next going to talk about proposed road alignments within the ITA plan. Then I'm going to come back over here and talk about uses. And so in the event that you all can't hear me, so we've been able to condense the project considerably. I'm going to show you this on a map in just a moment to talk about just the area here at the north. And that's going to be important in a moment. What are these lines? These lines are proposed. Those lines are proposed road alignments that are, that are in the ITA plan that would extend Landstown Road South and Nemo Parkway across, creating a quadrant of basically four quadrants of development around that transportation. Now, I'm going to come back to that in a minute and talk about uses specifically, but we're going to focus on what is sort of the, the, the top right or the, what would be the northeast quadrant. Kathy? This is, again, this is just to remind everyone, priorities in the ITA plan were economic development, agricultural research, the provision of, of quality municipal services and conservation. And then the, again, expanded recreation fields specifically for the briefing, for the project or the parcel we're about to talk about, municipal services, and then agricultural production. Okay. And this is, and this, this map speaks to something that, that, that a member of council asked me to bring forward. And it was, there was, there's, there's been community conversation about the green line and the blue line. And, and a member of, a member of the body asked us to, to provide an illustration of the difference between the two. And so, so my staff laid out as, well, actually, we just pulled from the comprehensive plan, a, a map to show the difference in the green line and the blue line. What's the blue line? The blue lines, the line, sort of the, the hard line that we established for water and sewer infrastructure, where, where a previous version of council made a decision not to go, not to go any further south to, as establishing a second urban growth boundary. Okay. So let's, so now to talk about the deal as it stands today. As I mentioned, we've really condensed the, the site by getting a better understanding of the, of the prospects needed land use. And so this is, what is this that you're looking at? This is a map of, of the ITA and the, and the adjoining uses. And then what are those red lines? Well, that's city infrastructure. That, that, those are roads, water and sewer infrastructure, Dominion Transmission Easements, all of the, the various services that are, that are provided through there. And so I'm going to step over to the map again, and I'm going to move the mic over so that hopefully the public can continue to hear me. And I'm just going to give you, I'm going to orient you all as, as it relates to where we are. Here's North Landing Road. As you all know, North Landing Road runs to our municipal center. The municipal center is right here. This is Nemo Parkway to, as it, where it intersects with Princess Anne Road. Here's Virginia Beach National Golf Course. Here's the Princess Anne Athletic Complex. Here is our existing innovation park, which was originally, of course, the biomedical park. And then here is the ITA. And so to give you an idea where, where the initial request came in for all of this, we took, as we, as we indicated in the last public briefing, we shared with our development partner that, that we understood, that we understood that that was not likely something that you all would accept. And so that's where the request for the 250 acres started with. We've refined that land plan to get to, Kathy? 150 acres at the north end of the ITA. Now, this is, this is no longer phase one. We, in working with the prospect to better understand their, their land needs, we anticipate, in fact, we've had confirmation from them, that, that they can operate, they can execute their entire strategy with these 150 acres. And I don't want you to think that they shot and missed, or that we didn't understand. It's just, it often happens at the beginning of these projects, we don't fully know until we really get into a conversation about need. And so as they've learned more about us, and we have learned more about them over these past few weeks, also as they've gotten a sense of what's, what's palatable to the community, they've been able to condense their land plan down to 150 acres. And so to further orient what we're looking at here. It wasn't lost on me that it's important that we maintain credibility with the community. And so where we're starting with 150 acres here, and where this started with a three-phase project, the question came through, well, how do we, it, we anticipated that there would be a question, how do we know that it will only ever be 150 acres? And so one of the things that we have told the development partner that we would be offering today is this next point. If you all were willing to do so, the city owns the 100 acre south. Actually, we don't, we own all of this. One of the things that you could consider to ensure that development was contained to the 150 acres on the north would be a 100 acre, smaller, larger, but, but, but we just put 100 acres in there to get to the 250 acres we originally talked about. But a preservation easement that would prohibit any development south of this first parcel. It would also effectively inhibit development south into the ITA any further and into the agricultural area. Now, let me tell you why this is, why, why we thought this might be attractive to council. In the staff report that you all have, there's a line that says that this, that the project as it currently sits is not compatible with your ITA plan. And when you're looking at all of the real estate there, that's absolutely true. However, this northernmost parcel was the parcel that was designated for a municipal service facility. It's a, that municipal service facility would require an industrial two or heavy zone, heavy industrial zoning. An industrial I1, industrial 1 is a light industrial zoning. So if you all were to advance this, you would see that not only would, with the preservation easement, would we contain development, further, we would, we would be able to remove the statement that this plan is not compatible with, with the current comprehensive plan in your ITA plan, because this parcel specifically was called out for heavy industrial usage. Now, it's important for me to, in the interest of fairness, it's important for me to add that that heavy industrial usage was not manufacturing. That contemplated heavy industrial usage was municipal service, a recycling center, the ability, you know, when we had storms, a place where debris could be gathered and transferred. That nut, and so I don't want to create the, the thought that we, that prior versions of council thought that we would put manufacturing there. That would not be accurate. The prior versions of council thought that we would put municipal transfer facility there, which would, which by its use would require an, a heavy industrial zoning. But, so this is still not a perfect overlay, but it does remove the conflict with your comprehensive plan on that parcel specifically. With that, I want to, I want to stop while the map is up here and take any questions that you all might have.
Okay, any questions at this point? Okay, Rose, Mayor?
What are some of the things that are built in between the blue, in the transition there, between the blue line?
Yes, ma'am. City Hall is one of those things for sure. Kellum High School is certainly below the green line. I'd have to check to ensure that it was above the blue line, but I'm assuming it is. Yes, ma'am. It is above the blue line. Yes, ma'am. Courthouse Estates is below the green line, but, but, but we do provide city service there, so above the blue line, of course, the Harris Teeter to the north of us here is, is above the blue line, or she, you know, the, you all are considering some items tonight that, that are below the green and above the blue. And so, yes, ma'am.
That Village.
Yes, ma'am.
Igate Greens.
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
So there's a lot of stuff that's in that transition area.
Yes, ma'am. Now, it's important to note with this, you were, in the ITA, you all were more specific about use specifically. In this case, you, you know, residential use is not allowed within the ITA at all. The only, and so, and there, there are additional restrictions, and that's why we, we did work hard to ensure that what we brought forward was, was compatible with, as compatible as we could with your, with your, with your current comprehensive plan. But, but to your original question, yes, ma'am, we, we have seen quite a bit of construction between the, the green and blue lines.
Okay, Barbara, and then Josh.
Well, it's important, one thing that I'm finding out is when we do this next comprehensive plan, every dotted I and crossed T has got to be very carefully done, because when people are reading that who were not a part of developing it, they read in different things. And so the intent is what doesn't carry over at all. That's a statement. But remember, from the green line to Indian River Road is the transition area, because when the green line was established, there were already rezonings in place for the area below that, which, you know, had to be recognized. That's, we tried to downzone those, but the courts overturned. So that's how some of those early residential areas were built, because they had their zoning from the 1960s, not after the, not after the green line. And they had to be recognized. And it's so important, you know, it's hard to take just a blanket statement and say that's that. But the transition area from the green line to Indian River Road essentially, became the transition area to do just that, to transition from the suburban to the rural. Didn't say it wasn't, it was a no-growth area. It said it was a transition area. And so the developments have been at a different rate. And then in 2003 or so, with the design guidelines that were developed and really started the rezonings, that's when it, it got to be one unit per acre and 50% open space, and we followed that ever since. So it, it never intended that there wouldn't be anything there. It's just that it would be at a different rate. And, and so, but, you know, the original Kellum High School was there from the 60s. So, you know, these, you have to, you know, kind of recognize intent and, and what things were, how they came about. So it was never a no-growth line. It was an urban services boundary. And any urban services that have been extended for those neighborhoods were extended not by the city, but by the developer. That's, that's sort of been the thing. The city hasn't extended those things. It's been the developer that extended them and then needed to give them to the city. But if you look at that area, except for Princess Anne Road widening there and that little bit of Nemo Parkway that just went over to the Veterans Care Facility, there are no roads that have been built since that time. And those lines on the map from the ITA plan, I think our Public Works Department said as soon as that plan was, said, this isn't where they're really going to go. We're, we're just putting them there. And I see Phil remembers that, too. So, you know, you really have to kind of take everything with a, a bit of background knowledge when you, when you look at things. But I would just say, because of that 150 acre development area, at the time that the ITA plan was updated after the city had purchased all of that property, one of the things that was asked of the consultants, and we hired some very good consultants and paid them a lot of money to work on this, could we look to see if and when SIPSA determined to move that transfer station from where it is, because it's not in a good place. It's over there by TCC and right there by our, our medical facilities. Could we find a place in the ITA that could be away from residential and could be fully buffered so that it would not be a, a problem area? And so that's why, and they asked for about 100 acres. And so that's why this was designated at that time, because recognizing that the public use was probably going to present itself, that we might want a place for that. So that's why it was determined to put there because of, of that request. But I've come up with another public use, which I think that could be a good place, because it needs the same kind of thing, buffering and away from, from residential, and that's our law enforcement training center. So we have to kind of recognize that there are public uses that need some property like schools and, and things of that nature. So if we use up this property, we've used our potential public use sites that meet that criteria of access because of where it is at Dam Neck and, and Landstown Road, access and away from residential, and very well buffered. And those are just two uses that would fit there, but if we get rid of this property, we've gotten rid of those potential sites.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Adams. I've got a couple of questions, but I'll just start out with two. I know we've been hearing a lot from our farming community, and certainly want to respect agriculture as, you know, the, a key component to our economy and history that it is. And recognizing that some of this space is, is indeed being actively farmed, I'm wondering what, what this 150 acres represents, is that, you know, the, the better or worse part of the farmland, how farmable is this? What are the, what are the conditions there like? And then, and then I'll wait for my follow-up.
So, so as it relates to dealing with the first question, as it relates to how this, how this impacts farming, I mean, I'll give you, this is 150 acres, just, we're about to have, but from a, from a standpoint of how much farmable acreage you have in Virginia Beach, you have, you're about to have, when we, when we finish the project we're working on now, about 10 and a half thousand acres in the agricultural reserve. And that doesn't include any of the 700 acres that are here. So, so in, in the world of commercial agriculture, 100, 150 acres is, is nice, but it is, it's not what's driving your economy. The, this is the northernmost portion of the ITA. It's, it's not general, I don't want to speak for the, for the family that is, that is farming that land today, but it is not, it's not even, I would tell you, it's not even the richest soil from a farming standpoint within, within the ITA. But, but that said, it is, I don't want to, I don't want to downplay the fact, it is, it's an agricultural rotation today, and it's working for that purpose.
Thank you. And my follow-up is, you know, I, some, some of what we've heard also is, you know, if you're of kind of further encroachment, which, which you've, you've presented here, a solution with the 100 acre preservation area, which I would assume would be by way of some sort of deed restrictions or something of that nature, or maybe a, a preservation or conservation easement. Is there anything, is there anything else we can do, I guess, beyond just, because I would assume that that would require, you know, if we were going to undo it, and nine votes could undo or release the restrictions. So is there something else that might give us a little bit more assurance that, that that area would be preserved and, and nothing further south would happen?
So, so Councilmember, I'll have to yield to the attorneys on that. I mean, one of the things that, that we had talked about at the staff level is that the city could perhaps gift that 100 acres to the agricultural reserve. But I'm hearing from our, from, in a brief conversation with our attorneys earlier today that that, that that may not accomplish any more than a, than putting it in a preservation easement, but that's something we would have to research. That said, though, we're at the staff level, we're in our conversation with the, with our potential industrial partner, we, we're confident enough that they can deliver what they're after in the, and, and that they can deliver the full scope of what they're, what they're hoping to do here in the 150 acres, that we're willing to put whatever restriction on there, council deems is appropriate to protect the agricultural community.
Okay, anyone else? Rocky, then Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I want to just boil it down to what I think it is from the almost 100 emails I've received. I think by and large, the folks accept a new business coming in to, to have jobs and and create places for folks to work. But I think what I'm hearing from the public, that they're seeing this as a test run to see how far we can move the green line down. Because what I'm hearing is, if you get in there today, where is it at tomorrow? How, how far do we go before we destroy this green line completely? And so that's what I'm hearing from folks. I, I don't think they're opposed to new businesses and new jobs coming in, but I think they're seeing this as a, as a test run to see how far they can go to get into the green line. And, and that's what I'm seeing. So, and I appreciate the work you've done, because you, this is totally different than anything I've heard. But I think at the end of the day, that's what we're hearing, is just how, how deep are we going to go? So how we answer that question, I, I don't know, but I certainly think we need public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. By the way, I'm getting a lot of those same emails, and that's where this preservation line was born. And, and I do think that, that people are looking for some assurance that we're not, that we're not destroying the line.
Yep. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And I certainly am very interested in making sure that we have a transparent process where we have, hear from all interested parties. But I'm getting a lot of emails, too. A lot of them are in, indicate or a belief that, A, the city is contemplating moving the green line, and that, B, the use that's proposed here is in violation of the comprehensive plan. So I wonder if you could provide sort of more information about, about concepts like this, or concepts that are below the green line? I think you touched on some of those. So that's number one. Number two, just drill down a little bit on whether or not this use is in violation of the comprehensive plan that's currently, that we currently use. And then three, could you tell us a little bit more about the history of the contemplated use of the waste transfer station and cycling station, and, and what that would look like for that area? And also, and also, you know, how far along we came in that process?
Yes, sir. And so I'll try to take those in order, but I may come back to you to, to tell me what I missed. And so, so starting with the land use, coming straight out of the ITA plan, which is adopted in your most recent comprehensive plan, pretty much south of that, of the bottom end of that yellow line, we, you contemplate only agricultural use. And so, so that's why in this, in the, in the cover sheet that's in your package, you see that, that the plan, as you last saw it, is not compatible with your comprehensive plan. However, this is where the, the I2 zoning for the transfer station is actually, is important, because that's a more intensive use than I1. And so we believe that we can remove that conflict by, by being in the parcel that is selected here. Now, I do want to talk quickly, though, about a couple of infrastructure things that are, that are impacted. We would not want to hide the ball from you or the public. And I'm going to step back over to, to the, to the map here. Now, Landstown Road that you see right there is not, is not presently rated for industrial traffic. That is an important, that is an important thing for you to understand as we, as we go after this project, if we, because, or if we go after this project. Because where we have shovel-ready drawings to improve that to a grade that would be appropriate for industrial traffic, that work has not been funded in your CIP yet. So that would have to be done. Also, I agree with what Ms. Henley said about, about lines on the page. I see our city engineer, Phil Pullins, in the room. Sorry, Phil. But, but as it relates to extending Landstown South and, and bringing, bringing Nemo across and creating that quadrant, that actually create, that creates an intersection that sort of the plan assumes that we would put some retail development around. Now, as you all know, there is very little additional residential construction that's going to happen in the southern part of the city, little to none, actually. And so if you look, retail, in my, in the economic development business, retail always follows rooftops. And, and so it's really dangerous to add retail if you're not seeing an increase in population, because it creates displacement. And that's where, and that's where you see retail overbuilt in communities, and you see, quite frankly, shopping centers start to struggle, because there's not enough trade to carry what's been built. And so from, in the event that, that you all wanted to build those roads, we would ask for, we would ask for the ability to do some real intentional research around displacement in the retail community to ensure that we had adequate, that we had adequate, basically, supply of, adequate supply to cover the demand, if that, if that were the case. And so, but the, the section of Landstown that terminates at the north end of this, this project is something that would likely need to be improved to, to carry truck traffic. And, and we think the likely route for the traffic is up to Dam Neck, a right turn over to London Bridge, and then London, London Bridge to the interstate. Princess Anne is also rated for that use, but we have some concern about putting that many, putting the trucks for this on, on Princess Anne. But, but, but that said, we do think that with that, we can clear the conflict. Now, as it relates to the, to the use, Ms. Henley very rightly said that it was our intention that this would be a materials transfer station. And, and she is right, it is distant from, from any, from, and isolated from any residential use, but it's not, but it's not isolated from all uses. And so this is, as I, as, as many of you have asked me about that use, one of the questions that has come up is, well, is it appropriate to have that, given how Princess Anne Athletic Complex has matured, and given that we've lost the signature at West Neck and the heavy use that we're seeing at Virginia Beach? use that we're seeing at Virginia Beach National Golf Course in the present, would, would it be appropriate to, to put that sort of facility adjacent to the two, to the two, to those two recreational uses? That's really a decision for you all to make, but we would offer some caution in that space. Just because, again, we've, we've lost West Neck, Nationals absorbed those rounds, Princess Anne Athletic Complex, really a jewel of the city. And so on, depending on how the wind is blowing that day, a, a, a transfer station could be a challenge for us. That, that said, it's, we go where you send us, and, and that is, and if, and if you tell us that's where you want to put it, then that's, then obviously that's, we would deliver that plan for you. I had not contemplated the other use Ms. Henley put forward, but that, that is a, that's, that's an interesting opportunity. But, but then the third part of your question was regarding, was it, was it other projects that had been built? And so, and so, yes, sir. I mean, most, you see on the north end of that, the Innovation Park, which was the biomedical park, of course, Acoustical Sheet Metal is, is, is operating from that space today. That, all of, all of that yellow line that says Innovation Park is currently zoned I-1, which is the same zoning we would seek for, for this parcel. And, and we anticipate Architectural Graphics, or AGI, will be, will be moving into that space to create capacity for, for another one of our large OEM manufacturers. And so, and so, yes, sir, it's, it's important to note that there is man, there is manufacturing happening in I-1 spaces below, below the line today.
Okay. Werth?
Along those lines, as a follow-up, and thank you for your work, Mr. Adams. How, I mean, the, the U.S. Navy is a really important partner here in this project or this part of the city. What kind of uses, would a school be allowed, you know, under the Navy's definition?
I would not, though. I'm, I'm looking at the planning team. We don't think so, but we're checking that right now, where you will know in just a moment. But, but it is not a residential use, but it's not, but going back to what Ms. Henley just said, the intention of the use, I don't know that a school was intended within the ITA. We do, but we do leave a carve-out for agricultural research. So we, we're, we'll, we'll have an answer in just a second.
Or other uses like recreation or training? It's going to be fairly limited, I would think, because of the amount of people.
I'm getting head and eye jester.
Amelia?
Can you go back over the route? You were mentioning about the problem trying to have those industrial trucks coming down Princess Anne or Landstown. What additional cost would this be to us having, because putting that in there, you will have to have some way that it gets around places. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
So, so the good news is, Dam Neck is already rated for the use. Princess Anne is rated for the weight. And then, but, but we think that London Bridge is the straightest road to the best, to the best interstate access for anything that we would build down here. And, and also, it's important, I mean, because of the amount of manufacturing that we already have in the London Bridge corridor off of Independence, that that, that road already gets fairly heavy industrial use. And when I say industrial use, I mean truck traffic. For us, we do think that the improvement of the, of that, of Landstown Road would be a project that was worthy of consideration. As you all know, there, there is state money available in the present for site readiness. We would certainly make an ask for that if you all told us to move forward. But one thing that, that many cities do, and, and that we think it would be appropriate for our city to consider in this point, and this is, and this sort of gets into the process of, if you all were to tell us to go forward. One, there's a zoning matter to continue, to, to work through, but also, in addition to that, there's a development agreement that would, that would be necessary for, to complete our sale. We do think it's appropriate to restrict, to restrict truck traffic from this site within the drive times. That, that's, and, and that is, that is done in, in cities of our size and larger fairly commonly. And really, we don't like to have those trucks running at night either. And so generally, we would be talking about it early in the morning, and we would be talking about after the drive time for them to be able to move their product. And the, and the good news is, there's broad precedent for this, well-established precedent about, throughout the country, and we would anticipate a manufacturer of this sophistication could respond to that.
Okay. Barbara, then Josh.
Just a comment. When you notice that that yellow part up there is the Innovation Park, and it has acoustical sheet metal operating in it now, therefore, there is precedent for I-1 in this area? That was not the intent of the council when it was done. Supposed to have been an office research park that focused on biomedical technology. It was a major flop. The intent of the council was not to have what is there, there. I don't even know how that got approved, because we're only now being asked to change the design guidelines. It was supposed to have been a very carefully done access to the municipal center. The intent of council was not followed. It didn't work. But now you've got the precedent that you're saying, see, here's I-1 below the green line, you've already done it. That's what happens. We set a precedent when we do something, even though it doesn't turn out to be what we thought we were getting. Because if you want to point to anything that was a big flop, it's that yellow box up there. That first yellow box along Princess Anne Road.
Mayor, if I may quickly, Councilmember Remick, we've just gotten a thumbs up. School and educational use would be allowable specifically around that agricultural carve-out.
Okay. Anyone else at this, oh, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Adams, a follow-up. In term, I think I heard you say this in the other briefing, but in terms of other large-scale developable parcels for industrial facilities in our city, do, do we have any besides that?
No, sir. I mean, and so, I got a question. Some of you may have seen, I met with the, with, with some of the member, I met at the Creeds Ruattan last night with some of the members of the agricultural community, and specifically the Farm Bureau, and, and got that, and the question that, that came to me, is this the last, is this the last, if we do this, is this the last parcel? And, and, and I can honestly say, I mean, I do, I think of this as the last industrial parcel that, that we have for development in the present. And so what, particularly large tract, particularly if we were to put the preservation easement over there. What other land is there? There's a, there's, there's a couple of hundred acres left over in, in what was originally the Taylor, Taylor Farm. It's split between, it has, it has, it's split between two owners, and it's currently zoned for agricultural use, and it's, and it's not held by the public, and we don't, and, and we don't have a, a means or a funding source to even initiate a conversation around buying it. And then the only other thing we could think of would be the Navy's Future-Based Design Program. But as you know, that RFP is on the street, it is, it is active, but we are, we are years away from that property being available.
And then, you know, speaking of emails we've been getting, you know, we've been getting a lot of emails from people who are, who have been asking us to, to vote no on the rezoning and, and contemplating that there's an application that's been filed already. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there has, has not been, to my, to my knowledge, is there any kind of rezoning process that has been initiated?
No, sir, there has not. And I'll go back to the original briefing on this. The reason that we're having this public input is because we have this letter of intent that we've received from a manufacturer that would, that would, that would like to develop this, this site. And, and the reason that, the reason that we're advancing this now is because, one, we don't have your will as it relates to what you would like to do here. So if you want to do this, then we, then we will move along. If you don't, though, then it'll be, it'll then be my, my obligation to work with our regional partners to try to save this project for the region, and more importantly, for the Commonwealth. Because we are competing with other states for this, and so, and, and if we're competing for other states, we're competing with a myriad of cities in that space. And we're the, and we're fortunately the group that they have, that they have selected. But, but if this is not right for us, then, then, because we go where you send us, my team will walk away from it and will, but, and then we would then work to help try to keep it within the region. But no, sir, no rezoning has, application has been submitted. If you all were, wanted to know more about the use and the intensity of the use, and, and I can talk, I have learned a little more about what we're doing here and can speak to, generally to what I believe the massings will be. But those are things that would all come out during the rezoning process. So when, one has not been initiated, it is important to note, even initiating the rezoning process does not obligate you to an outcome. It simply continues the, the public input, and it allows us to continue refining the plan to understand if there is a means of putting, putting a plan together that, that is acceptable to the community, but it in no way obligates you to an action.
Okay. Werth?
Thank you. So, Mr. Adams, how many, in, in your career so far in Virginia Beach, how many 100 to 500-acre inquiries have come in looking for manufacturing and logistics or any other type of industrial? How rare is this, and what do you do with the others?
So there are not an abundance of 100-acre sites in the Commonwealth. The, I've done two others. One of those is a project that, that, that was on a parcel south of Dam Neck, that is, they got quite a bit of publicity, but, but you all zoned the parcel for that use, we've not announced it yet, but we anticipate, but we're, I'm going to try not to smile too much when I talk about that one, because we're really, we're really excited about that deal as it continues, as we've, as we've shepherded it through a pandemic and it continues to be viable. The other was the Sunny Farms deal, which also, incidentally, requested a, a property in this area, council, where, where there was, where there were incentives that were offered by VDP and by, by the, by the Development Authority for that, for that project. We were not able to complete a land deal with that and, with that operator, and, and so that still remains unresolved in the present. Beyond that, councilmember, that's it. 100-acre, 100-acre and larger deals don't come along very often in this business. They certainly don't come along with the, with the amount of capital investment and the jobs attached to this one. They're, they're very rare, and they are highly sought after in the industry.
Okay. Anyone else at this point? Amelia?
I see it like the blind leading the blind. Because since we don't have enough, that kind of detail, everybody's second guessing what this is. And until we, you know, go dive a little bit deeper, you will continue to get, we will continue to get these emails, because everyone's guessing what in the world is going to be on it. And each person has their friend that's adding to it. So you just mentioned that you could go a little further, so people will have that ease. How important is this? Because you've mentioned also about competing with other states.
Yes, ma'am.
So, this is something that seems important. At the same time, we've heard from the councilwoman about this is just the beginning of it going down this way. So you see how these rumors are, at least in her mind, because she went through the Innovation Park, so her mind is set that this is going to happen. So how can you prove to us in some way that reassurance for that district, that is all going to stop there, is the preservation acre? It all looks good. But tell us more.
So, so yes, ma'am. And so, so thank you for that question. First, as it relates to the Innovation Park, it's important to note that, that Ms. Henley is absolutely right about the use. However, the, the zoning that was attached to that, that use because of the intended medical aspect was I-1 from the beginning. That, that said, she is 100% right, that that was, that it was anticipated that that would be biomedical research. And so, but what we, as we dove into it, we found that that was, that there wasn't really a market for that in the present. As it relates to, to this, so as, I'll take them in reverse. I'll talk about the preservation easement first, and then I'll answer, I'll, I'll talk more about the intended use here and what we think square footages are and things of that nature. So, so first, at, we're, the best protection that we can, that we can offer the public is the will of the city council. And, and that, we're, as, as your staff, we go where you send us, but, but if you all, if city council puts a preservation easement over that, over that parcel, only the city council could, 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 could take it off. Yes, ma'am. So, so yes, ma'am, it's really just about, it's about the will of this body and, and future bodies. And, and, and it would be, I'd be remiss if I said anything else at this point, as it relates to the land use and the protections we could put in place. Now, as it relates to the use, as we refine the plan, this is, this is textile-based medical product manufacture. The, things like masks, surgical sheeting, incontinence garments that are used in hospitals, things of that nature. These are, these, these are made in a clean environment, they do not create environmental waste, but they are, but, but it is, this is textile-based medical manufacture. All of this product is, is being manufactured today in China, as I understand it. And that, there's an American company that's acquired the, the rights, basically the patent rights to this product. And this, and so this is, this is part of the wave of manufacturing, of repatriation of manufacturing, that we've been exporting for the last, for the last 50 years. I, I think about it, you know, I, I grew up in a small town in the deep south where the, the major, the major employers in the town were, one, the timber industry, because there was a paper mill. You grew, if you grew up on a farm like I did, or there were, there were, there were large tech, because we, because there was a lot of, a lot of agricultural product grown in, in my home. There were, there were facilities that, that dealt with textiles. And, and of course, all of that, or I won't say all of that, but the majority of that manufacturing was outsourced to Mexico and Asia over the last 50 years. We're now seeing on the back end of the pandemic, that for the strength of our own, and security of our own supply chain, that a lot of that has to come home, and that we, and it needs to be made here. And this is, and, and this is part of that wave. That is also, that is also why this project is so competitive. All of that activity will happen in a very narrow window, while there's, while there's available, while, while there's cash available now, and, and people are still feeling the effect of not having things during the pandemic. And so, so that's why communities are, are competing so heavily for this type of manufacture, because it's, because this is a narrow window where, where we'll have an opportunity to bring this home. And so, and that is also why we were able to condense this land plan. I mean, there, there, there are, there are still aspects of this that may end up going to other communities, but, but the majority of what we're after can happen here.
Okay. You know, at this point, you know, I think what we have here is a true dilemma. And I think this is going to be the bit, you know, the beginning of a wave of the future. The realities are, we are running out of land in the city for a lot of things. And, you know, I had a conversation with Werth just last week about the importance of getting some businesses here that, you know, to change the ratio from residential to industrial, to more industrial, to, you know, you know, positively affect, you know, tax, you know, residential taxes. But once again, we're running out of land. And, you know, the thing is that, you know, what we're going to be facing in the future, colleagues, is the fact that we're looking for affordable housing. And I can tell you, you know, from a recent trip that we had, this is a problem everybody is having throughout the country.
Yes, sir.
And the other thing is bringing more type of businesses, high-tech businesses, so we don't get the brain drain here. But, but once again, you know, I think that it's really important, and, you know, I'm just going to say this, and I'm glad you brought it up. You know, I'm the vice chair of a group called HURUMFA, which is the Hampton Roads Military Facilities Alliance. And about nine months ago, we went to the Pentagon, and we met with the undersecretary of every branch of the military, because it encompasses all branches of the military from the peninsula to here. Every undersecretary gave a major concern about our future relationship with China in a lot of ways. And, you know, to the point of, you know, potential confrontation, we don't know. So I think there is, in fact, a, a major effort to bring businesses home that we can manufacture locally for a reason. And I think our Commonwealth is interested that, and I think there's a national interest in that. You know, because if we have a supply chain interruption, whether it be anywhere from, you know, the material needed for electric cars to ships and everything, but once again, manufacturing, medical equipment, you know, is a necessity. And now, correct me if wrong, from a point of clarification, there are no longer phases. This is the project.
That's accurate, Mayor.
Okay. And so in other words, there is no, you know, plan for Phase Two, Phase Three?
No, sir.
And putting the buffer in is, in fact, a major modification to the original plan.
We believe it is, Mayor.
Yeah. But once again, you know, if I can suggest to council, given on the magnitude of the chain, that the chain's going, is there agreement that Taylor should include that in the public briefing tonight? Barbara?
Make it brief, because we're going to have a long meeting with a lot of speakers. I hope you can, maybe five minutes.
We would just show this map and talk about the change in the, in the, that's what we wanted to do this, this afternoon, so it was published. We would just show the map and show the parcels and get out of the way.
Not all of the interpretation and justification, just the facts.
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Okay. You know, but it was, you know, since it is a major modification, and I think, you know, public has to thank, Rosemary?
I mean, a lot of people are at work and see this in the afternoon, so, and they need to know about the changes, so I think.
Yeah. And if, if I can say one other thing, you know, once again, when you have, you know, a major company coming in like this, you know, sometimes there is... Yeah. And if I can say one other thing, you know, once again, when you have, you know, a major company coming in like this, you know, sometimes there is a need for discretion upfront. But when we, as we move forward, if we do agree to move forward, there will be a full public, you know, process on it. There would be a vote on it. And, and at that point in time, the information would be.
It would, Mayor. And, and one step further, I mean, obviously, I work for you all. And so it's, it's my job to gather these things and bring them to you. But I am not the, I'm not the, the prospect's advocate. And so in the event, but, but as we don't have an active zoning matter, it was left with staff to, to carry, to carry the ball at this point. In the event that you all told us to initiate the, the rezoning, whether the ultimate decision was up or down, we would ask that we be allowed to step out of the way and that the, the prospect hire their own public engagement consulting group and that they carry the ball from there. Because at that point, it's, it's, you know, if we're, if we're into rezoning, I don't, as, as, as your, as one of your deputy city managers who is, who also has to lead the planning department, I don't know that it's appropriate for me to be up here with, speaking, speaking for the project as it goes forward, knowing that there's a planning matter that's under review. So we would, we would take it a step further and even with your permission and ask that the, that, that the prospect hire their own public engagement team or come forward themselves and carry the ball from there.
Okay. Yeah, Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, after the public comment, if it's council's desire, we would seek guidance from council to determine what we should do next with the project. Should we go ahead and initiate the rezoning? Should we gather more information to brief you? Or should we put this down? So if council asks any time to the, just give initial guidance on what you want us to do next after the public comment, that'll be desired by staff.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we, we can certainly do that and have a, you know, discussion at the Dia Sonata. But, but once again, you know, let me just ask from my port of clarification and, you know, the direction, this would not be a type of vote, but just a direction.
Mayor, to clarify, this isn't anything to vote on at this time. What we would seek is, does council want us to, A, initiate the rezoning process will be basically prepare applicant, the project, prepare application that will be considered by the planning commission. And then the planning commission will give you a recommendation and advise you for council to consider at a much later date.
And we would have a draft pretty much, you know, pretty, you know, what from the get go, you know.
And, and yes, sir, you, we need to know your intention. We don't have to have it tonight. We, we'll likely hear some things that we want to reflect on and that we'll want, that we'll want to do some research on as well. So, but, but to the manager's point, yes, sir, not necessarily tonight, but at some point in the near future, we'll need guidance from you on what you would like us to do.
Would it be prudent to have a, you know, discussion in the, you know, our next workshop? You know, would that be within the timeline?
If that's council's will, we could do that.
I think it would be better if we had, you know, an internal thing. It's, it would be on camera and things of that nature where we would hash out, you know, you know, the, you know, do a SWOT analysis on this thing. Barbara?
I would like to make some comments after hearing from the public tonight.
We could, we certainly have comments without question. But in terms of, you know, setting a direction and everything, I think, you know, the, you know, the most transparent way to do it is have a conversation among ourselves and then you give the direction as we have done in the past. Anybody else at this point? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Okay. City council discussions, initiatives and comments. Anybody? Rocky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out that on May 22nd at 1800 hours at the Kemp'sville High School Auditorium, we're gonna have a town hall meeting to discuss the Kemp's River Crossing project. I'd like to welcome anybody to come out for a guest or just hear about the, hear about the project in District One. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I think, you know, that's a very important process that, you know, once again, early engagement, you know, with the, the community. You know, once again, as we're going forward with the need for some type of infill development, we just have a lot of strip malls that are failing right now. But we have to come up with a win situation that shows a balance. It's gonna be a challenge, but yeah, I'm glad you're doing that. Anybody else? Chris? And then, or?
For discussion, we all received a letter from the Atlantic Association as related to something in the water and Frail's comments, our proclamation changed the dates. And so I didn't know if we had any updates from economic development in terms of, did the festival reach the $2 million in admission tax target? That was something that came up as clearly the Atlantic Association's not supporting a change in date. Did we have any final counts to the liaisons on the attendance? Do we have those numbers? And, and speaking with some of those in the hotel community and the retail community, they, they actually did not perform that well. So I'd love to get some information, discussion around the true economic impact as it relates to something in the water this year and how concerned they are about changing the date.
Would it be possible to make that an agenda for our next workshop?
Mr. Mayor, I think next steps on that is we retain a consultant that's going to do an analysis on all the different festival and events for the season. And then the hope is to have all that information ready to brief council towards the end of August, September, at the end of the season.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, so, you know, perhaps a little better picture. You know, obviously, the other thing is that we have some new events coming in with the Country Western and the Jaffa Loaf and everything. So we can do a thorough analysis. Thank you for that, Mr. Taylor. And you have something else?
Yeah, and maybe it's another agenda item, the, and having some really in-depth discussions with staff about the project art that had come up. Maybe we can add that because it's come to our attention that we're having challenges with that public art finding a vendor. And that was $750,000 that the previous council had appropriate out of tip funds. And so I think it's important as we have committed to transparency and trying to work together, getting an idea of what, what does, what do the other members of this body think about this public art project? And is there any intent or interest from the body to, to look at public art from a citywide standpoint, being that we do have some options here. We have to look at if we're gonna reappropriate those funds, if the vendor can actually deliver and what we initially asked. And so maybe we can add that to Patrick, to a full discussion.
Does council want me to bring up our agenda item?
Yeah. I'll tell you what I think. It may be, you know, a good idea. It's a good idea to hash it out and, you know, just to, you know, once again, it may not be a bad idea. Does anybody object to doing that?
Some more, I don't, no objection at all. It's a great idea. I think some more research. We only had one respondent to the RFP. And then at this point, it's way over, I'd say way over budget, it's well over a million dollars. So I think that's way over $750,000. So some more research and questions and answers are being conducted right now.
If anything, you know, if we come up with justification for, you know, and explanation of, you know, the impact, you know, there's a financial impact and there's also a community impact. And I think that should be weighed. Anybody else? Okay, Michael. Then.
Thank Mayor. I just want to bring something to the body's attention as well as to the manager. In the last few days particularly, but then I can go back and say the last few weeks, I've been getting a lot of inquiries about, from constituents, from concerned citizens about people who are experiencing homelessness in Virginia Beach and then referring them to the Homeless Services Division of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation. And of course, I know everyone in this, within the organization, everyone within the body is very concerned about people who are experiencing homelessness and want to make sure that we're connecting them with the appropriate resources. And so I'd like to request a couple of things. One is a briefing when, you know, when it's appropriate, when you can get on the calendar about what exactly are the services? How do they work with nonprofit organizations? And sort of what does that look like? Just, just to bring us all up to speed, I think some of the newer members and, and including some of the members who have been here before would benefit from just another look at that, what that process is. But then also, I think for, for me, I can just speak from experience, especially in the last couple of days, when constituents are bringing these things, these, whether it's an encampment that they're reporting or it's a person who appears to be homeless or may be homeless, or a family who's experiencing homelessness, who's staying in a hotel, trying to connect with resources, there are limitations to what the city can, information the city can share with that reporting citizen and with me. But I think we need to close the loop in terms of what the communication looks like from staff to the constituent or to us. So when someone reports something to me, what I can do is then refer it to Homeless Services Division. And then I think we need to, to create kind of a response mechanism by which we can indicate that the report has been received, that action has been taken. And so that citizen can have some assurance that we're taking their, their concern seriously. Right now, I'm trying to do my best to report back, but without knowing the details of the case, it's hard to do that. And it may appear that these cases are falling through the cracks when in fact they're not. But also, if there's limitation to what services the city can provide based on the number of beds available or staffing, we need to look at that too. So I hope that makes sense. But, and I just want to say for the, for those in the community who have reached out to me, it's, it's one of the top priorities, not only for me, but I really feel strongly for everyone in the city to make sure that we're compassionate, that we're caring and that we're responsive to these concerns. But there are limitations in place about what we can share and also resource limitations to what, what response the city can provide to provide emergency shelter and then ongoing housing. It's an ongoing challenge that every community faces. But I think we have room for improvement in terms of these communication mechanisms. And I did meet with, I did have a chance to speak with Mr. Chandler about this earlier. So I was able to share some of my experiences with him and he was very receptive and I appreciate that. But it's just something I think we need to look at and be, be more transparent about.
Good. And before we get to Amelia, Michael, just so you know, as part of the whole project that we're gonna be initiative, which you're gonna be part of and a number of other folks here, homelessness, affordable, and, you know, that type of thing, working with veterans with PTSD who unfortunately wind up, that good majority of them could wind up homeless, you know, that's gonna be one of our focal points going forward. And I'm looking forward to your interaction in that regard. Okay, Mr. Amelia?
Just briefly, I want to mention that what we went on for the exchange was very informative. And we got to learn, one of the main things was regionalism, branding, but learn a lot about how they do what they do. So we'll share more of that later. But right now, next week, May 23rd and 24th, it's a Virginia Transit Association meeting. It's gonna be at the Oceanfront. Over, close to 400 people are going to be in town. And they've filled up the Sheraton, they've also filled up the Hyatt and still looking. We're gonna have mayors and council people and other within our town from nationally coming in for this. I wanted to mention that the vendors that are coming for transportation are not only national, but international vendors are coming into town. Other point to mention is that the rack, the rack have stepped forth to offer 10% discount on the restaurants. So what we're doing for that is BTA on the second night, instead of having the usual dinner inside, they're giving each person a $25 gift certificate that they can go out for that evening and, you know, work alone and have something to eat at our restaurants. So I want to commend the rack for those who are gonna help by giving the extra 10%. And I asked them, how many carts have you done? Over 10,000. So you can imagine we're gonna have quite a nice time. I'll be there in my role as Chair for the Hampton Roads. But this is something, if anyone else, well, everything is full, but at least being aware of it. And other group, the freebies are gonna be giving them in shuttles, free up and down. But so you can see hotels are important because they've run out.
Anyone else? Rocky and then work.
Just a point of information. Will that discount be available in District One? If they want to go to a restaurant in District One, we'd be glad to have them.
Okay. I'll pass that.
I, I, I think District Ones are new at the center. It really has to be placed down somewhere. Okay, work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two issues and topics for my colleagues. Number one, the legislative assistant, while initially was opposed to this program, now that it is in place, and now that I've now seated in my fifth month or so in this new council seat, I do find a need for a legislative assistant. And so colleagues, I have two qualified assistants and one is more elderly and has been a legislative aide before. And then the other one is a more junior person that would probably do more of the work. And so I ask for you all's approval to proceed to hire two. One would be, would get the phone, one would get the city laptop and the email address and the phone number. But both I would, and neither one would exceed in total 20 hours per week in workload.
So the, the max would be 20 regardless?
Regardless, 20. And only one person would have the laptop and the phone.
Okay, Barbara?
Well, I had asked during the budget process where this is in the budget. So now that we are hiring these, I guess you know what budget is paying for these and where they are, we can, where we can find it in the budget.
Councilman Haley has mentioned when you asked a question initially, what we're doing right now is we're covering it from vacancy savings. And then the goal would be for us to kind of get a sense of, you have a forecast what the cost of this will be so that we can actually budget for it in the fiscal year 25 budget. Right now, based on what was previously approved, we're covering it through vacancy savings and managing it that way so we get a better way of forecasting the cost for it.
Okay. I'll see you a separate time because I just really, everything's got to have a line item somewhere in that budget. I'd really like to see where it is.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, work.
I'll follow up. So I guess we can proceed with this. So I did drive down to Charleston as a member of the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Exchange and back on, and I do support our city's participation in our region, this effort to not only visit other regions that are like us. Charleston, in my opinion, is probably the most like our region. It's certainly different, but most like us in terms of their port, their military presence and the tourism aspect and their, I won't say cul-de-sac, but the along the East Coast. So we learned a lot. We learned how much things we are doing similar to them. But affordable housing is probably their paramount, most paramount issues for them. Traffic, as we saw, going in and out is, is an issue as it is with us in certain points. Labor force, hiring enough workers to support their manufacturing needs, that's a real issue with that region. I think that's an issue here. But we had regional leaders with the chamber, with workforce development, with regional roundtable, with Tidewater Community College and others. And of course, from our city, a lot of things that we can as a city do to improve. I think we, a lot of folks are looking to us as a city to be more of a leader in our region. And we do collaborate. They collaborate down there too, but behind scenes, they also compete. So they're, they're very similar to us. We learned a lot of lessons.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest takeaways, you know, my meeting with the mayor of Charleston, they were rocked and devastated when BRAC closed down the Navy base down there. Okay? We were on a BRAC list in 2005. And I think, you know, the lesson learned from there is reinforces the positivity that we have, the relationships with our military here to make us BRAC proof. You know, hopefully, once they get together with this land use thing and, you know, we maybe actually be able to put some data centers and military intelligence there and everything, it'll help because, you know, the, you know, the military is changing. They're gonna be eventually going to pilotless aircraft and everything. And we gotta be ready for any kind of transition that comes. But the other thing is too, you know, once again, how they reacted and, you know, took advantage of their assets, their tourism, their port. They have many, many, you know, characteristics and similarities that we were able to learn best practices from. But, but once again, you know, we were on a panel with other mayors and they're gonna come up and visit us. And I think that's gonna be great. And then I had the, the honor of meeting the woman who's the CEO of Volvo, the manufacturer there. Turns out she's a frequent visitor to Virginia Beach. And she spoke very, very highly of her experience here. But, but once again, things are about relationships. And as we get involved and just meet and get together with other leaders. But there were quite a few of, you know, prominent industry leaders, whether it be Dominion Power and, you know, there were a bunch of other folks there. And Dr. Crossden was there and the gentleman from Centura College and everything there. It was a very well-rounded collective group that really produced some. Michael, you know, what are your thoughts?
I agree with everything that was been state, that's been stated. I think there's a lot of, a lot of lessons to learn from. I think there is a lot of, a lot of lessons to learn from the way that Charleston, the Charleston region is working to optimize opportunities for residents. And they also face many of the same challenges, including as I think Councilman Remick said, of affordable housing in particular, as well as workforce development. We heard from young professionals there and you could have taken that panel and, and placed it in Virginia Beach in terms of many of the challenges that young professionals and opportunities that young professionals see in our respective communities. So I appreciate Mayor, the opportunity to participate. I think a lot of important relationships were strengthened, both, both within our Hampton Roads region and also with a sort of a sister community. And, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Good. Anyone else? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I won't be long, but I wanted to acknowledge 45 individuals who I watched graduate from the Virginia Beach Adult Learning Center English Language, English Language Acquisition Recognition Ceremony. So 45 people learned how to be proficient in English and, and, and more supportive of their families. And it was a really wonderful experience. I delivered a keynote address and, and filled in for our vice mayor, who was, I really appreciated the opportunity to, to be there that day and, and to speak with the faculty who honestly really enjoyed their jobs. So that was, it was a great learning community there. Also visited the Virginia Beach Environmental Science Program at the Barack Center. And just hats off to Chris Freeman and Diana McDowell, who are the director and program chair for the Environmental Studies Program. And met a, just a ton of just really bright students who are interested in resilience and the marriage of environment and economy and who are really interested in getting involved in internships. So if there are business owners out there, if there are people looking for, you know, bright young minds to help, you know, help address our resilience and sustainability challenges going forward, that, that is a really good resource to tap. And then finally, I, I know those of us who are, serve on the, the joint, the Joint Modernization Task Force or the, the school liaisons to Bayside, Princess Anne and Betty F. Williams, we've been engaged in the Planning Advisory Task Force meetings for the EdSpec study that is ongoing. And there'll be additional community meetings on, on June 1st at Prince, for the Princess Anne High School in the Princess Anne Library. Bayside High School is May, yeah, May 31st in the Bayside High School Library. And then for the Betty F. Williams and Bayside 6th Grade Campus, the, the, the community meeting will be on May 30th in the Bayside 6th cafeteria. And I believe they'll start at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Bayside's 6 o'clock.
Yeah, Bayside 6th and Betty F. Williams is May 30th. Bayside High School is May 31st at, at Bayside High School Library.
At 6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. And Patrick, would you mind, I understand you attended a fireman competition last week.
Yes, Mayor, I did, on, on your behalf, in the, you were at the Charleston event. So I spoke on, on, for you and gave the welcome to firefighters from all over the United States, as far from Las Vegas. They came to attend the annual Steel City of Virginia Beach Firefighters Challenge. And it's 15 years that we've been doing it and firefighters came in, went through all different kinds of tasks, showing their firefighter skills, using all different kinds of equipment to demonstrate their success and their ability to save lives. So it's a great event and we have it every year.
I'll tell you what, if you ever get a chance to go to this, you know, they have it at Mount Trash Mark. It is amazing watching these men and women firefighters do some incredibly challenging type things in competition with the camaraderie and, but once again, to say, thanks Steel Corporation for, you know, facilitating this. Okay, I think we're ready for the council agenda review.
So, and the ordinances and resolutions. Okay, 1 through 6. Number 5. I'm just wondering, like Amelia, have you heard anything from HRT about freebie? My question about this is impact. So how many users would be affected by this and whether this money could be better used or could be allocated to citywide services as it relates to transit? So I don't know the relationship between this and HRT and bus transit, but I have a question about that.
Initially, we had, with that, we did the pilot and it went very well. So this is why we're moving forward. Yes.
So the funds, I'm thinking of a funding source. Is this the only use for that 1.2 million considering it's coming from the fund?
Expansion of the freebie.
Amelia, do you have, sorry, Mayor, can I?
Yes, please.
The pilot program that HRT ran, do we have, when, when will we be able to see kind of the results of that?
So, Mayor, I think that HRT still owes us, owes us some information from the results of that pilot program. And again, that pilot program was in Bayside area and it was the last mile transportation, basically, things other than buses to kind of get people back and forth. They do owe us a report on that. And the intent was after they confiscated all the data and got all the information for them to present that to council, so that they can let council know what the success looks like and the ability or the feasibility to expand that to other areas or to continue it throughout the city.
Okay, so is the will of the group to at least have it deferred to get that report first? I mean, I'm comfortable with that because the main reason we have that is some of the people in the different areas could not get to the peak season. So the microtransit was able to transport them to the main, uh, main route. And it worked very well. So this is why we're moving forward to try to continue that and maybe expand it, not just to Bayside.
Okay, yeah, but this is different. Freebie, again, is only for the oceanfront. And then the previous brief we gave council, the initial ask from stakeholders in the community was to expand to 10 year around. And council gave direction to see if we can get freebie to just do 10 in the peak season and go to 5. Freebies came back and they said they can do 10 in the peak season and go back to 5 during the off season. And that's what is before council for consideration right now, but it's only for the resort area.
Anyone else?
It was coming out of the parking lot.
Yeah, I remember in that briefing, we mentioned in the report that we saved for council, that the parking lot has the ability to absorb it for another year. And then the intent would be to assess it in the fiscal 25 budget, to bring it possibly into the tip fund to continue to cover it on a perpetual or annual basis. So if council approves.
We were comfortable at first with doing this.
Do we want to move forward or do we want to defer?
I'll go with the will of the body.
I'm good moving forward with it.
Yeah, anybody object to moving forward?
Please, on ordinances?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, I've, I've got a couple of questions about K3. So if, if we could pull it so that we could talk about it, it's not on consent agenda.
Under planning. Number one, the applicant is asked to have it deferred. Does anybody have any problem with deferring them forward?
Because speaker signed up already. Like, so I'd advise the applicant, just in case, unless he hears otherwise from us.
All right, well, we'll hear it then. Just know that they've asked for a deferral. I guess indefinitely.
Anything not say, I'm sorry.
All right, because I asked you till, for now, I guess it's indefinitely because we don't have a date.
Yeah, you didn't give me any kind of timeline, sorry.
Okay, number two. District 1.
No objection.
Number three. District 2.
I have no objections, but I would like to make some comments after the vote.
Okay.
Number four, District 2. Number five is pulled. Number six is.
I don't know how to speak up for number 5. No. The applicant signed up, but just in case there was opposition.
Okay. Number five?
5 is 1%. Number six, District 6.
No, no objection.
Number seven?
No objection.
Number eight is District 5, no objections. District 5, no objections. Number 10, District 5, no objections. And number 11?
No objections.
And number, number 12?
Clarity, 112. What are we, what are we amending? Mr. Mayor, can Kathy Warren come in?
Yes.
Good afternoon. In the Oceanfront Resort District, we permit temporary parking lots on an annual basis, but they may only have one year. Because of the shortage in parking that we are experiencing in the resort this year, we wanted to tie this to the Atlantic Park construction project and just allow for two additional years during that construction timeframe.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have Rocky.
I just have a point of order on planning 5. What did we say on 5?
Yeah, they had one speaker signed up, but only if, you know.
It was the applicant.
It was the applicant, only if needed.
So it's back on consent.
Okay. And so then the, the next point of order I have is, and I've been reading through these every Friday package. And for example, planning, and I'll just use number one, for example. Planning 1 is Prince's formerly District 5 Lynn Hayden. Do we need to put that formerly in there? I, I don't, I don't know that I really am concerned where it was formerly at, but where it's at now. So I, I don't know if it's something that, that we can take a look at. And I just don't see the need in saying formerly wherever it is. Maybe there's some history behind it, I don't know, but.
I think that's a good point.
Second thought.
It's confusing.
Does anybody object to removing the formerly from, you know, I think, I think we got to establish our own identity.
Right.
And it is confusing.
Yeah, it is. And I take pride when I see District 1 there, not formerly anything. So let's get the formerly out of there. Thank you.
We do too.
Okay, moving out of the formal session, informal session. The chair will now entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meeting laws allowed by Section 2.23711A. Florida Virginia has amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property or public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3. One item District 5, another item District 5. Public contact, discussions of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms of the scope of such contract where the discussion in an open meeting session would adversely affect the bargaining possession and negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A29. Project football, personnel matters, discussions, considerations or interviews for prospect, for prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do I have a motion? Second. Okey dokey.
Councilor Berlucchi?
Aye.
Councilor Henry Lee?
Aye.
Councilor Holso?
Aye.
Councilor Marais?
Aye.
Councilor Alzanna?
Aye.
Councilor Vassalman?
Aye.
Councilor Taylor?
Aye.
Councilor Mooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, we are restarting this conference.